I'm sure she's finally done.
Oh.
Alex, get them all put on and take them higher. What do we gotta do? It's taking longer than I expected. Well, I think you know why I started.
Well, I can firmly remember like at the event, which would have been before. It's been a long time. It's a time.
Usually it's like a weekend, so it's a little longer.
It's not like most of you got any four. No, no, because I wasn't sure how I was going. I didn't want to have a bunch of shirts and all that. I still have shirts. So I don't want, I don't want to order snacks or rice. Well, it's kind of cheesy. But if there is, my goodness, we will make money. Because we can get a shirt, we will actually be charged.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of 2022 meeting dates was published in the Eastern Express Times and the Hunter County Democrat on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, and posted on the vote and board at Borough Hall. Action may now be taken. Please join me for the next.
But you're interested in the flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Barry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yeah.
Schwartz.
Here.
Sylvester. Strange.
Here.
And fair.
Here. Just so everyone knows, Councilwoman Sylvester is not able to join us tonight. She gave us notice, step by eye. Motion to dispense with the reading of the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two regular minutes.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And Barry.
Yes.
Motion to approve the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two regular minutes.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two executive.
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
On to visitors. So tonight, it's very exciting. We've already had the opportunity to introduce this new officer once, Ms. Jessica Gutzit, Police Officer Jessica Gutzit, newly hired by Hybridge, first female officer in Hybridge history. Our new officer comes to us highly qualified and fully certified in basic course for police officers with years of relevant experience, which includes over five years' experience with the Hunter County Sheriff's Sheriff's Office, holding the rank of Corporal, where she has delivered several community outreach programs, including Project Lifesaver and Hook One Mobile. She served as a Class Two Special Law Enforcement Officer with the Reddington Township Police Department, has over four years' experience as a public safety telecommunicator with the Hunter County Communications Center. She served as a police officer with the New Jersey Transit Police Department, excuse me. Our new officer to Hybridge brings with her several certifications and specialized training, including Certified CPR Instructor, Crisis Intervention Team Certified, she's a nine-one-one Certified Dispatcher, Alcatraz Operator, Child Passenger Safety Certification, which means car seat installation, Crisis Management for School-Based Incidents, Field Force Operations. She is extremely welcomed to Hybridge, and we'd like to thank you for joining us tonight, Police Officer Jessica Gutzit. Department, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to this? You want to swear? We did a little swearing in quietly in Borough Hall, so she could actually start her official job, but we'll do a new one soon. Let's have all the P D's on.
I, Jessica Gutzit.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the ordinances of the Borough of Hybridge.
And the ordinances of the Borough of Hybridge.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the government established in the United States.
And the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
All the duties of the officer of the police office.
All the duties of the officer of the police office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
So that they could get behind the home, bring some equipment in. So I'm not sure what, how to proceed with this.
This is where exactly?
I'm at forty-one Mine Road, so directly behind the elementary school.
It's the first house.
First house.
The second, the second one on the left.
And it's behind your house up behind there?
Correct. Almost right before the last hill that goes up towards that playground.
So you're not sure whether it's your property or?
Yeah, I don't have a survey. We moved in in January of twenty-one. So again, that's another wrench to throw.
There, well, yeah, there has been some discussion already between Bonnie and the Dr. Hope off the school, whether or not it's on our property or their. I don't know where we left off on that, but it's really just a matter of.
Well, it's the school's property, so it's, the borough has an obligation for mine, as we made that in the book, to maintain its property of mines.
Did we hear back from the school?
No, we're still working.
Okay, yeah. Al Schreiker did reach out to me about that. I drove by.
Okay.
There's stuff happening, so I didn't come in, but we're aware that that's happening. We just also don't really know how to handle it. Yeah.
Okay.
It's called Mine Road, for a reason.
Yes, yes, we discovered that. I guess.
I would just say stay in contact with the company, you know?
Definitely.
In terms of what's happening.
Yeah. As far as I know, it just happened within the last two months, maybe?
Yeah, discovered the whole, maybe April.
Yeah, so we're still trying to.
It is getting a little bit too.
Oh, okay.
Well, there's at least one mine shaft up there that's about a hundred feet deep, straight, but they capped a long time ago.
That's what Al.
In the twenties or something. So hopefully this is not that one. A new one that needs to be capped.
Any other public comments? On to public hearings. We have a number of them tonight. Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-four, amend chapter one forty-five, amend area, yard, and building requirements. Motion to open the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
So just as a reminder, all of these amendments, these next three or four public hearings are going to be related to the grant we received from the county to update our zoning in certain areas, mostly the business zone. And this particular one that we're voting on right now, amend chapter forty-five, is mostly to set in place definitions that were not in our land use ordinance before.
Anna mentioned to me that this particular ordinance is also is identical to ordinance twenty-twenty-two thirty-three, except that twenty-two thirty-three includes the chart, which was inadvertently omitted.
Right.
So that being the case, it doesn't really make sense to approve this and approve the other. Maybe we should just vote this one down and then approve it, assuming that you want to approve it as part of third, it's right.
But there's no other difference? They just added the chart?
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
It looked the same. I thought I missed something.
We just went through this with the planning board, too, so. Just motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, take a vote on it.
Okay. We'll get back to this.
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Well, you know, if there's any member of the public who wants to speak on it, just, because once the public hearing is open, you can't just shut it down.
Comments? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-four.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Motion to adopt twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-four.
Yeah, put them on the motion.
Yes. Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-five, amend chapter one forty-five, amendment various. And again, that was similar to what we just went through with respect to the zoning. It's just creating definitions and taking out language that doesn't really make sense for our town, town business and zone. For instance, the requirement for two stairs if you're going to have chiropractors office or, you know, any of these other instances that would create an extra obstacle for people that wanted to open a business in downtown.
Right. The only, the only question I would raise is if, my understanding was the idea of keeping professional professional businesses off of the first floor was an intentional thing years ago. I wasn't involved when that was put in place to try to force retail, but this would be a shift. I mean, that, I'm not sure I see it as a negative shift, but, I mean, that's the only comment I would make. As long as we want to do that, that's fine. I think the purpose was to try to force professional things upstairs and have retail and food and those things downstairs to bring business, or what do you call it, traffic.
Yeah, so again.
But I'm not sure that's an issue anymore.
We, pre-COVID, met with Darlene and a small group of planning board members, myself, and went through all of these items because we did get this grant from the county to renew these, and that was one that was, that particular one, and I mention it only because it's specific to a business that's open right now, that he had to spend thousands of dollars to get a variance for that, which kind of doesn't make sense. And then there's other language regarding childcare centers, which doesn't really apply, taking out language regarding parking requirements. So it's really trying to make everything easier for a business to come to Main Street.
Yeah.
It's motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing. And this is that, that's our.
Move.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, it's going to be my second.
Sure.
Second. Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
So that's all I have. Just the council members, I'll open after the public.
Solitude, Solitude Village. I like that we're making changes to make it easier for people. And I remember back in the day when some of those rules, rules were, you know, created to force people to do this or to do that, and it's like, you know what? This is a little town, and I love that we're trying to be friendly, so thank you for doing it.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-six, amend chapter one forty-five, commercial zone updates. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Same thing, now we're in the commercial zone, which is not downtown Main Street. It's mostly along the West Main Street corridor. Same thing, taking, just taking language out that makes it cleaner and a little bit more redundant language.
Yeah. I was, I was surprised to see that we had to add, we have to have roof-mounted solar panels as an accessory use. Does that apply to individual houses if they have them, or only if it's done as a business?
This is just the commercial zone.
So. Oh, so there are no houses in that zone, so if someone has them, then they went in trouble. Okay. I just, I was surprised. I wouldn't have thought that that would be necessary, but okay. It's good to add it in.
It is.
Other comments? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-six.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-six.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordi, I'm sorry, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-seven, amend chapter forty, one forty-five, Ron Zone Updates, motion to open the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
All the same stuff here. Now, we're in the research and manufacturing zone. Cleaning up the language, taking our childcare centers, because it doesn't really apply, and make it a little friendlier if we ever have an opportunity in one of these zones. Other comments?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Didn't I do that over on the outside?
We had that on the other side. I tried to check it off as we do it, whatever reason I did.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-two.
You said the ordinance to adopt.
I'm sorry. Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two-seven.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-two, police vehicle, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Buying a new police vehicle, hopefully. We'll try to trade them out, bring one new in, we trade one old out, too. Seems like we have a lot of police vehicles. I always noticed that myself, but they're all being used, and it's a necessity, so.
I would always advocate if you put flames on it, but I think the chief would be happy if we could get one that just matches the colors of the rest of them, right? The most recent one was a teeny bit off-tone, and he wasn't happy about that. So, we need a nice silver one.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-two zero-three-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-two.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-three, amend chapter one forty-five, amend area, yard, building requirements with the chart. Motion to open the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
So as we mentioned before, this is the same one forty-five that was included at a previous meeting. Didn't have the chart. Now it does have the chart. Trying to make it easier on Main Street. Other comments? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-three.
Second.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, do a minute. Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Okay, motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Okay, written communications out.
Yeah, number of tax and finance reports, and one of the, nobody's running a report for you.
Now, old business, new business, on to the consent agenda. Anyone want to take anything out? Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda, resolution one sixty-two dash twenty-twenty-two through one seventy-three dash twenty-twenty-two.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange. Yes, with the exception of one-six-six, with, from which I understand. And fair.
Yes.
Introduction of new ordinances, ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three, excuse me, three-four, setting construction fees. Motion to introduce ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester. Strange.
Yes.
And fair.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash zero-three-four shall be published in the Express Times and in the Hunter County Democrat along with the public hearing date of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. On to committee assignments, Councilwoman Graham.
The first thing I'll do is the finance report, one of the tax bills, although it nailed out, but the other month there is an increase in the rate by eight cents, which approximately is about a hundred million dollars per year for the average taxpayer. The increase is predominantly due to the high school budget, which has increased by twenty-one percent over the past four years. And the local school budget has increased by about seven percent of the town, because that's basically for the finance. The golf, I have meeting on Monday, it was excellent. The numbers are obviously picking up because of the weather is great. Over the last six months, we're, it was up, demand's still high for golf, even though it's hot and dry. There are two projects that we've been talking about a lot. One of them is replacing the sewage pumps. The bid specs are coming out this week, so that is, there is some traction. And then the irrigation pump is about to be put on dock to be fixed this off-season. There's one that's functioning, one that is not, and this one is just being essentially rebuilt, and it's going to be functioning at a higher level. They have these surveys that they do, they give that to golfers after they play their round. And we are in the top ten percent for our region, it's part of positive reviews, so that was exciting. That was something that is unexpected, because generally, it's tough to pull a positive, it's easy to get an negative, so it was very exciting in practice. There was the Sakula Invitational, which happened, it was a huge success, a hundred and twenty-seven golfers were out. They played twenty holes, because it's the twentieth anniversary, and on the last hole, someone got a hole-in-one.
Oh, wow.
And they want to stay and play a package at Hawaii Resort.
Wow.
Pretty exciting. I walked around on Monday, past, a couple days ago, with the original architect, it was me, Jay, and Gordon. We walked the course so that we could see essentially if there's anything that was pressing. The thing that we've been talking about a lot is repairing the sand trunks, you can say that a lot. So he was walking around, but he was wildly impressed with the condition of the course, and he was very, he was just in great shape. The greens are in great shape, and he was just really, out of nowhere, he was just like, wow, this place looks great. It took him a long time since he had been on the course, and it was fun for him to watch. He goes, well, this was, this was where the original came, and this was, this was actually a history lesson, it's fantastic. There's one other item, the, September twenty-third is the Residence Day. So, of course, the last year, another is the, the new opening. So, try to work that out. That is, that's a high mark, but we'll see if that would be something we could do in the next year. But, uh, many of them, that was a surprise.
Councilwoman Barry.
So the Historical Committee, July twenty-two, twenty twenty-two updates. The committee met with effective architects and bidding contractors at Borough Hall on July fifteenth to consider bids for the reconstruction of Solitude House West Side porch. None of the bids proposed were awarded, therefore, the project will go without a bid again, and now to a bid review will take place in late August. We look forward to awarding the project in bidding construction by September. Project completion is estimated at ten weeks. The Historical Committee would like to thank residents of Hybridge and visiting tourists for their interest and support of the work we are completing at Solitude House. Currently, the Solitude driveway and parking lot are closed to the public. Parking at Solitude House presently permitted to the Historical Committee members, volunteers, and person, Hybridge personnel. The Solitude grounds are open to the public and accessible by trails onto the property from parking at the Tisco property or Solitude Lake. The driveway and parking lot at Solitude House is not equipped to endure a high level of traffic, so we appreciate the cooperation with parking in the stormy designated areas. The Solitude House first floor and exterior grounds are available for private rentals. The house and grounds provide a beautiful location to host bridal or birthday parties, recitals, family reunions, business meetings, yoga, or art classes. If you'd like to host a private event in Solitude, please email history@hybridge.com for further details. You can find information on our Facebook page, Hybridge History and Borough Shores are available at Borough Hall. The committee has hosted two Tisco open markets this year, and will continue to host them on the fourth Saturday of each month and from now through November. Our next market will be a pop-up market at the Commons on the H Street this Saturday, July third, twenty-third, from nine to two, and vendor setup starting at eight AM. Committee members, um, continue cleaning, painting, and remodeling the second floor, Solitude in preparation for the reveal of, for the second floor reveal, and our tour at our second annual Jazz Brunch. This event is being rescheduled from July thirty-first, and that will be held on August twenty-first, on Sunday, the brunch will begin at eleven A.M., tour's at eleven-thirty, and we would like to thank jazz musician Arturo for donating this time to provide live jazz music at this event. And, um, our tickets will be up for sale this weekend, and we'll be posting them, um, online, and we'll probably send out an email blast, uh, to the whole community. Uh, the committee is also currently looking for framed artwork to display up in the second floor hallway, which will be designed as an art gallery, if you have Hybridge-related art that you'd like to donate to the gallery, please email your information to thecommittee@history@hybridge.org. And, um, the committee's newest, newest Solitude House t-shirts, and our newly-designed Alien t-shirt, uh, there's a gentleman in the audience who's sporting one of them, if you'd like to stand up, show him. Show your t-shirt, he's, uh.
What?
Your t-shirt.
Show up your t-shirt.
Anyway, they're available for purchase in our retail store in Taylor's Trade, located in Solitude House or during live events, and our Tisco at the Commons will also be set up at Solitude during the same time as Jammy High Dam, which is being hosted by, uh, the Florida Hybridge Group coming up on August thirteenth. And another new item is our Solitude histor- historical information booklet, these booklets filled with beautiful pictures, compliments of former Hybridge resident, Rick Lundgren, on sale for ten dollars, the book displays photographs of the Solitude House first floor remodel, and provides a detailed written history of the house and its association with the Taylor family and Meyer Works. It's a great reference book for Hybridge residents, or for any upcoming fourth graders who may want to go on the house and its grounds next year. The historical committee continues to work with the historic preservation consultant Dennis Burtland on the registry application to have Solitude House and its grounds placed on the National and State Register of Historic Places, and the borough received a grant in twenty twenty-two, work of Dennis, and data completion of this application, and in conjunction with the registry application, a strategic plan for the use of Solitude House is currently in review with the committee, and preparing for its submission to the state historic preservation office by the fall.
That's it. Councilman Schwartz.
Uh, yes, my educational report is relatively short, there was, uh, a board of head meeting on July eleventh, uh, there will be another one, the next one will be on August twenty-ninth, at six-thirty P.M., elementary school, please attend if you can. There is still an open position on the Board of Education, if there's any adult resident of Hybridge who is interested in position, and intere- interested in helping our schools and our community, please contact our school board secretary or school business administrator at nine zero eight, six three eight, six five five two. And I do want to mention that we do have a new school board, uh, business administrator, Carolina Seiwak, not sure if I pronounced her name correctly, um, but that is the person you should be contacting if you would like to join the Hybridge Board of Education. That is it. Thank you.
Councilman Strange.
Okay, um, going through the, let's see, fire department, I have here for June, um, June first, June thirtieth, eight forty-two incidents, two drills and two hurt details, and staffed the North Hunter Mutual Aid Station, uh, well, staffed the station for the North Hunter Mutual Aid group on June eleventh, from six P.M. to six A.M. It's a, uh, a shared services situation, and, uh, their staff hours, it says, uh, I think this is a typo, for the month of February, it says, but I'm pretty sure this is June, uh, six hundred and ninety-eight point four-three man-hours in, in June. Also, the music fest is in June, as people probably remember, success, and, uh, looking forward hopefully to an even better one next year. And, uh, the fire chief wants to remind everybody, you know, this is a dry, hot, flammable time of year, so, uh, do not be out having big fires out, uh, in your yard. Uh, let's move on to, uh, police department, I'll be brief here, I think the most exciting news has already been taken from me here, uh, because I was just gonna say that I saw Officer Gutsick driving by with one of the other officers, and it was exciting to see another new face out there, uh, and, and one who came with tremendous, uh, recommendations. Nine of our officers just completed, once again, firearms training, and, uh, of course, we have a new vehicle coming in, I, I know people look at that, and oh, we're buying another cop car, do we have to do that? I always want to point out that, uh, Chief Barton is the first, uh, as far as I know, first police chief of ours to send a police car out of town, other than on the back of a truck, a record truck, so that we actually are selling them when we're done, buying one at a time, not coming into a bad situation where they all break at once, which has happened in our town in the past, so it's, it's, it's a necessary thing. Um, let's see, let's move on to the events, we have, uh, a concert, today's the day, Thursday, Saturday, the twenty-third, uh, Gearbox is the name of the band, I'm not familiar with the band, anybody? Uh, I've heard good things, but I'm not familiar with the band, so that's this Saturday at the, at the Commons, um, the stage has been working well, my son was there when a tree branch bounced off of it, and said, ah, it didn't even shake, so, uh, it seems to be doing good, and we have a movie coming up later in the, in the summer, right near the end of the summer, as it begins to get darker again a little earlier. Uh, I don't know what that movie is yet, I'm not sure that decision's been made, but, um, we've had a little bit of difficulty with events this summer, and we've had one band cancel, and some other things, uh, come up, so, I think now we're gonna get back in the rhythm of things, and we're looking ahead to events end of summer and default. Uh, in terms of the rec committee, I have been unable to print out the minutes because my printer is not cooperating, I just said, so, I'm trying to pull this up, here we go, so, we met on June thirtieth, um, the rec committee discussed, uh, well, there had been a volunteer, you know, a few guys got together to, um, do some, I don't want to say repairs, but, you know, maintenance, we'll say, at the Nassau Trails Trailheads, uh, just clearing brush, uh, someone brought a little mower, went along the edges of it or something, and, uh, there were some puddles that got filled in with some, you know, kind of raked in with some gravel and smoothed out. So, a little bit of maintenance, done by the people, some of the people who were involved in the gravel grinder, um, kind of giving back after having a chance to experience our trails. Um, we've got signs that came in to put up instead of bags, to show that the trails are open, and then they can be removed with a wingnut, uh, when it rains and we can't use the trails. Um, the Monarch Way that, uh, Ms. Baldwin's been working on, Mia, is looking really good, there's been a lot of, um, reading between the, 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 uh, milkweed, and, um, it's now cleared, so you can actually walk around, where it now shows on the map, Monarch Way. I've seen monarchs out there laying eggs, um, females, and a number of other butterflies, but anyway, so go check it out. Very cool stuff. Uh, let's see here, and then there's also, maybe, maybe getting some programs via, via Mia, through Mia, um, four-H from Rutgers, maybe helping us with some other programs that related to that, uh, Monarch, Monarch Way and, and, and setting up those environments, uh, come later in, in August. The, uh, we had a report on the dog park, uh, it looks like the small dog area is a little overgrown, and hopefully the HBBA can begin addressing that, um, the bike park had a little bit of touch-up as well, and is getting some positive feedback, I've actually seen some stuff on YouTube and stuff on it, reviews of it, very positive, and they're looking to do some more, just clean up and keeping, maintaining it as we move into the fall, uh, in August. There will be, I, I think this is more related to others, but it, it's in the park, so the gazebo of the, the roof of the gazebo in the Commons, uh, the local Girl Scout troop will be taking that on as a repair and a, kind of a, it needs some help, we'll just say, the, the cedar, cedar shakes have done their, their time, and need to be replaced, and so they're gonna be handling that. And, I would say, last two things, we're looking ahead, this year, summer rec did not, it didn't, it's simply trying to get it back up and running after a two-year hiatus because of the craziness, um, it just, it couldn't happen this year, but we have already begun the process, or they've already begun the process of setting a schedule and a timeline for making sure it has time to get going for next year, and to be planned and, and reawakened, if you will. Um, let's see here, last but not least, uh, the Hybridge Venture Race went well, it was a slightly larger group of people than the previous time, it went well, and we're, they're wanting to look ahead to June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three for the next one, aiming for thirty to forty people instead of the fifteen that we had this time, uh, lots of fun. And I think that that is about it for rec, I think that's it. There you go.
We cut our document shredding event back at the end of June, we had seventy-six cars with a lot of document shredding, so, for a small town, we keep filling up those bins. Also, to follow along with the Girl Scout troop that has really adopted the Commons gazebo, it's really cool that that Girl Scout troop, from way back when the gazebo was first put in, they passed that project along to each upcoming aged-out and next group coming in Girl Scouts, so they constantly maintain the gardens around their forest. Uh, it's troop eight zero five nine four, actions with Kelly Baker and Courtney Bolger as the leaders, and they were the ones who noticed that the roof was really in bad shape, so, we have it on tonight, we passed the resolution for them, and waivers have been signed, so they can begin work, and everything's gonna be donated to that cause, so with the taxpayer money. Gillian Honeycock had a gold award project that she worked with the Environmental Commission on, where we were collecting plastic bags, we had containers in Borough Hall and different places, and bags are actually turned into recyclable benches, so she has two benches, I don't know if DPW picked them up yet, or not, not yet, they're on her porch, ready to go, and inside the gazebo, if they fit in there, would be perfect, if not, outside somewhere, um, I have a picture of her sitting on it for her gold award. So, it's, you know, thank you for donating it to us, and they'll be well-used, I'm sure. EC continues the water main street planter project for the summer for us, and that's a lot of work, going up and down Main Street, making sure those flowers are blooming, especially in all this heat. The Girl Scout troop, the same ones that adopted the gazebo, also asked if they could do anything else, and I'm like, oh, how about watering the concrete planters in the Commons for us? So they're gonna do that with their weekly readings, so we're just very blessed to have them helping us out. And the concerts, Steve was mentioning, after the last concert, people tried really hard to put all their recycling and their trash into cans, but we didn't have enough, so I asked Bonnie to make sure that we can bring some extra ones up, because there were just like bags and bags all around the next day, and then it was spilling over, and I got a phone call from a resident saying, this looks like a mess down here for Saturday morning for the trail people, so, we just need to make sure we've got.
We have to water the rest.
Yes. Okay.
Last month, we talked about trees, uh, we did get a forester to go around and look at the trees that we have in town that are in danger of falling on properties, uh, we kind of listen now, we're working on debts and prices to get the top ten most dangerous ones removed. We did, now, we are finishing phase one of the sewer pump house renovations, we did have our closing for the NJID loan on June thirtieth for the One Bell Well, we're hoping that because we were utilizing funding from the past fiscal year, that we still would be eligible for an additional five hundred thousand of loan forgiveness, uh, which is great. We, um, also, the water main work around the middle school started this week, that's gonna be about two or three weeks completion, and then once that's completed, we can do the, 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 the paving in that area, and hopefully that'll be done before school starts. Then with the, with the town gas representatives this week, again, we're, uh, looking to have them do their lines on East Main and Highland before that road work gets done, they do have enough interest now that they are going to proceed, if anybody else is interested in that area, they can still sign up, get a gas line in before they get started. That's probably gonna be in August, by the time they get started. The bids are now, as, uh, as Mr. Graham said, for the pump replacement golf course, we're going out this week, they're available now, and also the West Main Street water main work, things to be done. The audit was completed recently, and they should be available, um, next month for, uh, council approval.
Bonnie, is there any news on the Triduro Bridge, the New Jersey Transit?
On the Triduro Bridge, I continue to ask them for a meeting, they're supposed to arrange something for us to have a, a, a meeting with our emergency services, and find out when the closures are gonna be, where, when, how.
They're still set for spring of twenty-three, right?
Yes, yes, but it's very hard to get them to arrange that.
Um, I just have a couple of things, um, one, the Economic Development Committee met about a week ago, um, our schedule's a little changed up for the summer, we talked about the home-based business initiative, which is a county-wide initiative to attract home-based businesses to Hybridge, and of course, county-wide, and how that may work for existing Hybridge home-based businesses, and we'll be for some feedback there, it was a good meeting, um, still need new members in the Economic Development Committee meeting. Uh, as Chris mentioned, our tax bills are going out next week, we're hoping to have a tax letter to go with that, that explains some of the details of our tax bill, and why it's gone up, not by the municipality, but by the schools, and, you know, just, you know, making sure people understand how their taxes are being used. The most exciting thing I have to report is the very first ever, um, Hundred and Games, which is going to be on August twentieth, it's from, you've probably didn't hear about this yet, um, it's from twelve-thirty, five-thirty, it's gonna be based in Union Township, it's a county-wide event, competitive event, between Alexandria, Bethlehem, Clinton Town, Clinton Township, Franklin, Hybridge, Lebanon Borough, and Union Township. We're hoping to get, um, teams of twenty-five people to participate in, again, competition, it's heated already, we, we haven't even gotten our t-shirts yet, but the events are gonna be kickball, tug-of-war, volleyball, pie-eating, wiffleball, spelling bee, pool-a-boo, cornhole, name that tune, giant jango, relay race, inflatable joust, we're trying to get, um, this is, all the mayors are trying to coordinate this from all these different towns, so just have this be a true community-friendly, highly-competitive, let's kick Clinton's ass kind of event, um, but, oh, I'm sorry, let me, let me hold back. But we're still looking for volunteers, um, but it, it's, it's really shaping up to be a really fun-looking event, so again, August twentieth, anybody that would like to compete, let me know, anybody that wants to show up and have some good food, it's gonna be there, it's gonna be a fun event, first annual, hopefully, um, we win.
Yeah.
If, if we win, it's posted in Hybridge next year.
Can you get a selfie or something?
Yeah, there's gonna be some fun stuff, so, um, it should be fun, so, that's all I have. Uh, sticking over, we are down to the legal issues.
I do have one issue that I need to report to Council, oh, I'm sorry to just bring it up. And, and in fact, I'm a little disappointed too, because the last meeting, I was able to report that there were no lawsuits pertaining against the borough, and don't you know, the very next day, lawsuit was served on the borough. It's a crazy situation in terms of the borough being named, although it's briefly, let's know what it's about, um, it's a dispute between a group of Ford's Management, or Ford Management Group, um, which was operating, uh, Mrs. Riley's public house as a Ford tavern for a while. They believe that they had, or have a contract to buy the tavern, as well as a contract to buy the liquor license, apparently a dispute arose between them and the owners, the owners decided to get them off the property, um, they were working there at the time, um, and the owners asked the police department to send somebody to make sure that there wasn't a problem. And so, a complaint was filed by this Ford's Management Group against the owners, um, against several other parties, including the police department and the individual officer, um, claiming that the Hybridge Police Department and this officer aided and embedded, um, the owner in dispossessing them wrongfully, uh, because they had a contract, and they should have been allowed to stay there, um, and that for violated their civil rights, um, and so, that is the complaint, I will tell you that the Ford's Management Group, uh, applied to court, um, immediately upon filing the complaint, to ask the court to compel the owner to let them go back onto the property. Of course, there's no way, I'm not gonna do that, totally denied, they're relieved. And so the lawsuit goes on, which primarily a dispute between this Ford's Management Group, um, and the owners as to what, whether or not there's a contract, what rights this Ford, the Ford Management Group has, and frankly, the way I see it, the Hybridge Police Department and this individual officer named is coming to collateral damage, um, you know, they'll answer it due next week on Thursday, um, and, you know, see if we can get Hybridge out with it, um, it's not easy to do that, but that's gonna be, in a tense of it. So that's the lawsuit that was filed, and if anybody have any questions? So that's the lawsuit that was filed, and anybody have any questions? As I said, I just felt terrible having to report no, no lawsuits, and the very next day, getting the other lawsuit.
No, I, I think, probably all agree, it's just not a good situation here at all, so thank you for updating us.
Bill list?
We have three million, one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety dollars and ninety-six cents.
Motion to approve the bill list.
Move.
Seven.
Go on.
Graham?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
So that's good. Strange?
Yes.
And fair?
Yes.
Second round, public comment, one minute per person.
Starting with Solitude, this is actually for Steve, question and statement. Steve, there's no concert sign-up there at the Commons?
There's no?
There's no sign-up there about the concert at all. Also, as far as the concert goes, I'm, I'm the resident who called Lynn, because I was, I actually, I wasn't going to call anybody, but I tried, I tried to separate the glass and whatever, I tried to do good on that day, but I'm too short, I couldn't get to the bottom of the barrel, so I needed somebody taller to help, so I called Lynn, and she came down and helped me separate stuff out. So Steve, at the concert, I would suggest, seriously, announcing to the people, because it's an open parading, to make sure that they put their blue bins, right, their recycling bins, make sure they put empty bottles and cans in the blue bins, and repeat that over and over, because they're partying and drinking, and, you know, and that'll really make it a lot easier, I think, for that.
I started up trying to separate it, and then it was so overwhelming that they couldn't...
Yeah, because it was July fourth the next day, and I'm like, oh, I gotta help, so I did what I could.
Congrats, Tom.
What's their signature?
The resolution for Christopher Reeves Grant?
Yes.
Awesome.
Was there stuff everywhere, or was it generally...
Here's all around the borough.
We saw the same thing happen, unfortunately, in twenty-twenty, where we weren't expecting the crowds, so we needed more garbage. I mean, people wanted to use the garbage, we didn't have enough.
And then they just started mixing, because you have some of the double ones, and everything got in everything, and then they put bags next to it, and then they...
So it's definitely a head in the next concert.
Asking to keep everything in the right place for the reduce, and then also having work in, so, okay, I'll, I'll pass it on.
The other public comment? But, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Go on.
Graham?
Yes.
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
So that's good. Strange?
Yes.
And fair?
Yes. All right, next council meeting, August eighteenth, seven-thirty.
Hi, Chris Graham, lucky to get a chance.